All right, good morning everyone. I've got a thumbs up. This is our work session that is held in preparation for our regular meeting, I'm sorry, it would be our recess meeting of July the 18th. This is an extended work session. We started it at 10:00 this morning. We're going to take care of the agenda first and we're going to follow that with a budget discussion. So we've left ourselves plenty of time to talk about our budget. We'll do those over the agenda first. And I did have a presentation by Phil Carter at the library, but he had a conference that arose, so he is going to come, I think, at our next meeting. We'll have him scheduled for our next meeting. So, first thing we will do is get into the agenda items, of which there are a number. There mostly are your basic, basic items of just normal process. So, we have two sets of minutes. Burke is not with us today, but he is, he has blessed the minutes. So if we wish to do what we normally do, which is to put those on consent, then I would make that suggestion. Ms. Harden has finished them and he has, he has looked at them, so.
That's good.
Okay, consent for those two? Alrighty. Does anyone have any comments they want to have enshrined on the agenda? No? Do you?
Oh, thank you.
Yes, sure, absolutely. And there, we have nothing listed under Mayor's business or Board business at this time. We have airport and Mr. Lincoln is out of town as well, but these are also basic items of travel for the airport board down to the conference. And then we also, the acceptance of the FAA bill grant for the hangar and seal coating the taxi weight cracks. Consent for those items? Okay, thank you. Then we have engineering and Cody's in the room with us. We have accepting the sole source quote from Thompson for caterpillar manufacturing. We have a damaged piece of equipment that occurred unfortunately while we were doing the demolition of the house on Apple Street, so we're going to need it to get that repaired. So consent for that one? We're going to need it, so let's say yes. And the contract amendment with Garner on the design of Spring Street. Anybody want to elaborate on that one? Just exactly what that's, what that design change is?
It's pretty simple, Chris. I'll let you take it.
So, so during the design process, we're right at finishing it and then we actually had MSU Jeremiah went to a NACCA conference and kind of the latest, greatest recommendations on bicycle setups. And so, we went back and looked at it, went with M.D. all the way through. And so this is having to redesign a little bit for doing bicycle refugee area. So, the previous design had them doing a U shape around this intersection. Now they'll be able to go straight through and it's a spot for them to queue in between. So it's a safer setup for bicycles.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate it.
That video split three ways coming up some.
Yes, right. So it's not the, it's a total of 15, but we are splitting it three, the three ways. That's right, okay. Consent for that one? And then we have two, lowest of two quotes for removing a stage in the Sportsplex center gym. Consent for that one? We have claim stock it, but we have the financial, financial statements consent? Okay. And under HR, all of these particular positions, with the exception of one, we've got one reclassification. We've got filling the sanitation worker position, that's already an existing position. Consent for that one? Consent for Gabriel Stanwick as Steamwick, excuse me, as police officer hiring, that's also a position to be filled. And then Jason Baker and Dylan Peaton as reserve police officers. Consent for those? The authorization to reclassify the fire inspector position?
Can we leave that one off consent while I do a little bit more homework?
Sure. We will leave that one off consent?
I may, I may, if you wanted to ask to put it on consent Tuesday night, but.
Okay.
We'll do that on Tuesday.
No problem. Then under IT, we've got approval of purchase of the server software. And Joel, while I've got you, would you give the board just a little bit of the same update that you gave me about our system, please?
Yes, sure, well, so as I emailed the board and the department heads a couple or three weeks ago regarding our new data center, which we are deploying, we have discovered that one of the nodes, one of the pieces of equipment is bad, has a bad motherboard. So Dell has been on site as of yesterday. They could not get the piece of equipment up and running, so we're going through the process probably to replace that very quickly. So, all that to say, we have not migrated off the old data center at this point. Just want to give you guys an update on that because we will experience some lack of reliability until that's accomplished. And so we hope that gets overnighted as of next week. This additional server software will allow us to deploy new servers, additional servers that will give us some redundancy and reliability. So, we should be on the home stretch, but we had a bit of a curve ball, so I just wanted to update you on that.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. So consent for that one?
Yes.
And approval of the lease and purchase of the storage array.
What is a storage array?
And that's just replacing an old storage array.
What is a storage array?
Oh, that's where, that's data bank backup. So, of course, as we invest in technology, which is great, we also are investing in data. Our data grows. All our records are now digitized. We are heavily in the video business now retaining video for the police video system. So our needs for storage capacity and backup capacity are increasing. So this is replacing an old piece of equipment for data backups and also giving us increased capacity that we will need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Consent for both of those items? Under police, we've got attending a forensic academy for Corporal Jackson. That's travel. Consent for that one? And Corporal Gladney attending training for criminal investigations. Any issues with that one? Consent? And approval for Shauna Cunningham to attend the, what do we got here? An International Association for Identification Crime Scene Investigator certification. So basically travel for all. Any issues? Consent for those? All right. And then under utilities, we've got emergency authorization to approve a quote for KCI for storm relief. When we had our storm, KCI came in and filled in for us, so we need to make that approval and obviously on the minutes with the request of the emergency authorization, so consent for that one? Approval of Neil Schaefer as a consultant for the Azalea Lane water tank painting and repair. Any issues about any of that? John, anything we need to know about any of these? Just traditional standard stuff? Okay, consent for that? And then lowest quote for a retrieval harness, which John, I think, you would tell a little bit about that that you did in the staff meeting so that the board will know what we're doing?
Yes, it's basically when we go into an area that's confined space, you've got to check the content of the air, make sure none of the poisonous gases. And when you do that also, you've got to have emergency equipment set up for retrieval in case a person does have a medical emergency or something like that. So this is just a replacement of the harness, the harness, the prop, all that, to set up and retrieve.
Yeah, I understand. I thought that was interesting, so. Anyway, all right, consent for those items? Any issues there, folks? Okay, all right, well that takes us to the end of the agenda. So now we will get to the, to the main core, the main course of the, of the morning, which is our budget. And the board was provided the, the large budget, or the complete budget, detailed budget, yes, which everyone has had an opportunity to go through. And as you looked at it, I know you, I'm sure you went and got to the part that said $2.8 million out of, out of balance. So, we then went back and whittled through. We've had some, a couple of meetings. Obviously our two largest departments are fire and police. And we went back through those and met with them, and so some of the changes that you have, should have in front of you here. And give you a summary of some of the modifications that we made and try to bring it closer into balance. And so that's kind of where we stand right now. So specific questions, items, thoughts about, yes ma'am?
I was going to say, I just want to supplement what you were saying.
Sure, no, absolutely.
When it's my turn.
Well, it's your turn, go right ahead.
I think what the mayor was saying is that the budget, the detailed budget that everybody, everybody got was fully loaded. All positions were budgeted, all requests were included, that sort of thing. And when, when we saw what the number was, and you typically don't know what that's going to be until you get to the end, we went back and, and did some things. There are some things that Webb and Lisa and those of us that had, had our hands in this so far, were comfortable making reductions about. There are some things that we are not comfortable making because they need to be board decisions, fire positions, police positions, those sorts of things. So, so Webb has gone through and given you a new bottom line that's based on that fully loaded budget with the, the adjustments that we think the board will agree to, the police, the fire positions, because they're similar to last year, and then some other things. And then that gets us down to a million two in the hole. And he's, he's got a list there, a nice list of the things that are in there that we might want to talk about. I want to talk a little bit about capital projects, to be sure that, that not just y'all, but the people who are listening, understand that we have a lot of capital projects going on, but their impact on the general fund obligation, operational budget is minimal. The only thing that's in the general fund operational budget right now is a $300,000 transfer over to the bill grant fund, which we have done for the last two, three years. There, we've talked and we have a possibility of reducing that for one year as we figure out what's going to happen with the bill grant to lessen that load this year. Parks, parks capital projects are funded out of the interest of 2% money, so there's nothing and can't be used for anything but parks, so there's nothing there. The Main Street improvements are being funded out of, to this point, appropriations here in state, OCDA. The federal government has sent, don't we have a grant from, and some other, other non-city, non-general fund dollars. So, so hoping to keep us focused on operations, general fund operations particularly this morning. And then those other things, general fund operations are critical because we have seven village rate. And we can only do that once a year, and so, so we've got to address that now. The parks, the capital budget for the Main Street project, the bill grant, are things that we can discuss further at other times, so it's not as critical that we, we deal with that during this process.
Okay. And we've got all department heads here that, except for Edward, he's, he's on vacation. I don't think he deliberately did that, but John's going to fill in for him if there are any questions from, about utilities.
All you did.
Yeah, about utilities. So, everyone has a chance, has a chance to look at this and you can see what we, what we basically have gotten it down to. And I had, I had put in, and I'll just start with what I had done, because the community development department actually is under last year's budget, so that wasn't, wasn't something that had cropped up. But I did put in there a $50,000 thing for updating the master, parks master plan, which we're rolling on to 10 years from the last time we did it. And I felt like it was something that we needed, if not start doing, at least start talking about, and so I put it in there. But obviously, we can push it to another, another budget year and this, you know, update till fiscal year '25. But that, that was $50,000 that I had put in there because I got a rough quote from the two that have done them, those four, for us before, which is Kimly Horn and Alon Thomas, and they both said in the ballpark of about $50,000. So that was what was in there from my perspective that was beyond what we were doing this past year. So, and we also have the second floor build out, which we were looking at doing. I think as we move out of, into the next term, out of this term and into the next term, one of the things that I wanted us to do is look at bringing in-house legal counsel, hiring somebody to come in, and so the build out of that second floor was one of the things to discuss. So obviously, those things are removable from the, from the budget, which is where that came from, so. And beyond that, the rest of it is, is pretty, pretty self-evident in terms of the explanation. So, anybody have any initial thoughts that they want to share? Yes, Mr. Alden Rupp?
The PERS, I understand we're about to take a lick, the state just sent ahead $700 million surplus?
Separate entities, Alden Rupp.
Do what?
Those are separate entities.
They can't.
Legislature can do all kinds of things.
The legislature could, but they are separate entities and it would require the legislature to make some change and push money over to the PERS organization.
Understanding that, the question is, is that, that's almost half a million dollars. Every city's going to take a lick, isn't it, having a conversation?
This, this year for us, it's about 150 that's built in, because it doesn't storm until July 1st next year. But, but next year, it really does bite.
And I'm hoping that the bite that's taken in this year's budget from all the municipalities, MML, will, will get a position moving forward that they will either spread it out over a longer period of time, or else they will reconsider exactly what it is they're requiring. But again, that's so far out of our ability to manage it, other than to try to influence our legislatures. And I have had legislators, excuse me, and I have had those conversations with our leadership as well, and I would encourage everyone to do that.
I'm going to say something. If y'all want to, if you can talk of legislators, the biggest thing faced MML and us is not the first thing, is the cut on grocery. And legislation may not do it, but the elimination of grocery tax in the state of Mississippi, and that could cost us a million dollars, over a million dollars in cities' dollars. And if we, if municipalities are not, everybody on board with that, that's becoming pocketed. People talk about it. It can't be done in Mississippi like it's done in Tennessee or Arkansas. They have a different tax system. People out here that are banging the gong for that right now don't know that, and then nobody's advising them about how our tax system works versus Tennessee's tax system. And so until we change, fundamentally change our tax system in Mississippi, you can't, where you've got state tax, county tax, and local sales tax. All of us have our own sales tax. In Tennessee, they cut sales tax, they cut state sales tax on groceries. Not, they don't, they leave county and city tax alone up there. Same with Pennsylvania, same way. Arkansas, same thing. They cut or eliminate state grocery tax, but that still leaves those local cities in, in whole, intact with their, with their, their sales tax. You cut it out here, you're going to cut whatever our retail, our grocery store generated retail sales, you're going to cut 18 and a half percent or 7% that we get from the state. And here, we generate a huge amount of retail sales and groceries.
But they could leave that in. I mean, they can structure that so we still got...
The gun who's leaving had a thing way up to diversion amount, but Presley's not talking about that. And if they got a plan, nobody's talking about how they're going to make the cities whole. That's the biggest issue facing cities right now.
Well fortunately, there's nothing we can do about that except talk to our legislators again, which we need to do. Alden, just.
And I, I've had that conversation with a couple of our legislators, to be sure that they fully understand the impact of what they do, if, if they in fact do that. And I've actually heard candidate Presley, Commissioner Presley, talk about that, and he, having been a former mayor, he understands how critical those sales are to municipalities. And he has, he has said that you can't eliminate the grocery tax without also finding a way to keep the cities whole. The easy, easy button answer is to change the diversion on other sales from 18 and a half percent to 20, 21, 22 percent, something like that to compensate. For, for us, it's a big hit. For a town like Yupura, it's a enormous hit.
Because that's most of their sales grocery, a lot of percentage. Oh, Mississippi's, our diversion rate, what we give back from the state is equivalent to about 1.3 cents local sales tax. And if we were given our own authority leasing, that, that's, and we set a 1.3 local sales tax, that's what the people would get. Well, in Tennessee, there's towns up there getting a half, cent and a half or two cents local municipal sales tax, local sales tax. And it's not effective about what the state of Tennessee does on, at the state level. In Arkansas, the same way. So if, the legislature's not going to do it because we're not a home rule state like, like our contiguous states. But if they would give us a cent and a half of local sales taxes, let us set that out in a referendum, but set up to a cent and a half local sales tax, they could do whatever they want to with state, with state sales tax. But that's, that's not the way the system works here right now.
No, not, not in that. And, and my fear is if they do give us a local sales tax, it would come along with a super majority referendum in order to pass it. And for a city that had three, four elections trying to build a police station and we couldn't get a super majority to fund that, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to get people to, to vote for, for tax.
If they'll leave.
No matter what the, what, what the purpose is.
If they'll leave the sales tax thing along with city, it works pretty well. Arkansas got local sales tax, they, after every four years, they have referendums on their stuff. And they got sales tax coming off in all counties, cities. It's just, it's just a constant come and go in every county, city, state, Arkansas. It's much more simplified here and yet what, and money you can count on, unless, unless you get some, get some metal around with it, and that's, that's could really hurt. I hope they know that.
And, and that, that, those are all good, good points, valid points, not relevant as we roll into this particular budget, but, but.
As it was, the PERS part, we talked about that, no, no.
Yeah, not, not terribly.
Right, all right. I'm going to pull, I'm going to pull Nam in here. When are you going to get your final numbers for the Sauer study?
Next week.
Okay, so.
Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, all right. And so we'll be able to have a better idea of what the, what those results are going to be in terms of, we've right now got a number plugged in of 850, so. And that is, and that is, what's the structure of that, that we have, in the past, we're now trying to keep up 100%, right?
We're trying to do 100% over the years we've moved it. We started out at 95%.
Right.
A year and a half ago, we moved it to 100%.
Okay, all right. So that's going to be one of those things that the board is going to need to, that's a policy.
That's 100% of the average.
Of the, right, yeah, as opposed to the 95% target that we had several years ago. So, obviously that's going to be, in order for us to, and we've been doing a good job, I think. We've been basically having less turnover than we've had and we've been able to recruit. Am I, am I correct on that?
Yes.
I'm getting nods from Chief Ballard, from, okay. So that, that speaks well, I think, of our, of our policy and our plan, and I would like to see us stick to that. But that's obviously an approximation, but 850, do you expect it to be, do you have any reason to think 850 is not a good number?
It's not going to be.
It won't be more than 50, well then, the way you put that, maybe it'll be, maybe it could be a little bit less. But, okay, so that's, that's one of those things that we're going to need to consider.
And, and because the bill grant is in sort of a state flux right now, I watch the idea of just making a $100,000 transfer over to that fund and the other $200,000 that we would normally transfer over there come from the interest that we will earn on those ARPA, bill grant related ARPA funds.
Okay, so the ultimate result of that would be 200?
Better to.
Okay.
Two, to our, so we're really basically pulling that mail that we use over there back in to put in general funds, would you say?
Two thirds, two thirds.
Based on the interest being accrued.
And that's a one, that's a one-year thing with us, because?
We've got to figure out over from over $1.2 million.
Well, yeah, and it's one-year thing in that as we spend that money down, we won't be earning that interest, so.
Okay, all right, so.
Cody, can you tell us the impact if we get $100,000 in Colonial Hills with that? Does that make any sense, does that?
Well, I think that the project is going to be more than we originally anticipated just because testing was so long. So it would certainly help, but we, we're getting close to having that advertised for this. We don't really know, but I'm sure it'd be more than expected.
So what happens, some work's been done?
Yes, sir.
Does that mitigate any of the problems?
Well, we had the trees cleared, which if we put on some of that on the contractor, you would see, I would guess, a 100% markup. So I think that the tree clearing would pay 60, 70,000 for, was probably half of what it did had we put it on the contract. So I think, and that's why we did that. So I think that did help. So we hope to get better prices because you can see it, it's clear, easy to get to.
What does delaying the remainder of that work, how does that impact that?
Will you say it one more time?
How does, if we delayed finishing that work, to my word, how does that impact the people living?
Well, the drainage condition is more or less unchanged. I wouldn't say because of the clear trees, it has a major impact. It's years and years, you know, it grows back up. But I don't think that 12 months per se is going to make a huge change.
Let's be a little more specific, because I think what you've got is a few yards that have some collapsed drains, is that correct?
That's correct.
So basically.
They, they've been that way for some time, so it will gradually get worse, but I don't expect it to just be overnight much worse, you know, very quickly. It's a slow, a slow filter. And we could certainly do some repairs to those, those holes, and they'll come back over time, but with some delay, we could make it safer to finish the street.
It's 200,000, that's what you're going to add to, we still have some money to lay up to do some more work.
We've got some old bond funds that we're paying for the remainder of North Side with, and whatever is left from that will be able to gear mark for Colonial, which I'm estimating 200,000. So I think Cody's estimate for the whole Colonial project's about 400, so I think we've got about 200 in our pocket-ish to go toward it, but we, we're about 200 short.
And, and that's because we've been working off a $250,000 estimate that is... estimate that is now, what, four or five years old?
Older than that, I think.
Yes, no, older than that, I think. This remaining two hundred was not the total left on the project. We do still have some other money. This was put on top of it.
So if we didn't do that, we're delaying that two hundred thousand, what could it be?
Some other drainage project, or streets, or sidewalk, or the bond, the bond written very broadly, so, so it would be streets, sidewalks.
Those are the questions, could it mitigate some of that?
Unnameable, unnameable, uh, not really, no, no. It mitigates it in that we don't have to budget for it, but it, it doesn't, because they're bond funds, the two hundred thousand dollars that Webb is talking about, because they're bond funds, they can only be used for specific purposes, and those are not the kind of, they're, they're for capital improvements, not the kind of operational things that are in our general fund.
So that its own here is two hundred thousand dollars as a consideration?
Yep.
So how does that impact that number two?
It, it takes it down to a million.
So, but you've got, you've got two hundred thousand that's sitting there to do something. So, um, and is that one of those things that could be phased? Could you, does two hundred thousand get you very far in phasing? It's, it's kind of an all or nothing?
I wouldn't recommend it there.
Okay.
I, I think that's all, though.
Okay. And do we know if Northside, we don't know what Northside's gonna be exactly, do we?
Wait, yeah, the low bid was, I think, right at four hundred, what, three eighty-seven is coming to mind, so it's under four hundred, man, I don't know this morning, they're starting to blow up. So we have a price in place, borrowing any, you know, any general orders.
Okay, so we don't have any...
We're, we're about two hundred.
And we have the budget?
Two fifty from the study.
Right.
And then two hundred from the bond.
So we're good to cover. Okay, alright, that's all we can, sure, is if, if that two hundred that we're looking at, need, would be needing to pull toward Northside.
It's after Northside's taken care of.
It's after Northside, okay, alright, I should do a sastif, that one.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, so that's, that's one of those things. I would like us to, to absolutely lead the eight fifty along, and plan for making those, making those salary increases.
That's what we anticipate, that we're gonna be short on, what we pay people, when the, when the finished study, study comes back, is that what we're...
Yes.
That's what Nav was saying, yeah.
I mean, I guess I'd address this question to Chief Ballard and Chief Yarver. I mean, I know that what, what we're considering is freezing out these, these positions again for another year. I know we talked about it in a meeting, a budget meeting, that just happened yesterday, but, um, are y'all comfortable with that? I mean, is that something that you feel like that we can go roll another year with this? And I, I know particularly, we, we got a fire rating that's, that's, we won't be evaluated this year, a couple of years, they're gonna, MSRB gonna come back and wanna look at us again. So tell me what you think, I guess, Chief Ballard, after that, just kind of...
Thank you for bringing it in. I think that we do what we always do with moving this. It's difficult not to have a person over there, just with the fact that something takes place major, but we're gonna have a city in our opinion, so we're gonna do what we need to do to make sure that we get our citizens here, I think raises are important, especially my person there to give the people, so.
I understand there's a possibility of us maybe getting a grant to help us with personnel, which will allow us to, to, I guess, improve salaries within department, and then kind of let this float for another year or something. At some point in time, though, we're gonna have to unfreeze and start hiring people back in these fire stations, right?
Not at that. I think this year, I'm gonna look at the same grant, we can hire up to probably nine people for, I think we have to pay, the city will be responsible, I think, about next three or four years, so that's one route we can take, that's something that...
Chief, you hired five of them, with that grant you're talking about?
Like, you hired five, and they have to pay the salaries, the benefits and everything for up to, I think, three years. And the city would have to take over that, so, so we definitely look at that. Other than that, with the, the rating, I spoke with Tyler Wood.
So, okay.
We have tasks to be next year, so I'm trying to push it out until twenty twenty-five.
Do you think, in your judgment, that if we're making, I, I, good face maybe not to write, but if we're working toward getting back to full employment, is that, and other things that count, keeping your rating, or do we have to be back at full?
Now, if they came in today, we would lose our rating, we'd go back to...
Okay.
So we have to...
So when they come back, right, we'll have to have a fifth station open and play any staff, right, for them, for us to keep the three problem?
Yes.
Because we got this new area over here, too, we, now, that's, that's incorporated, or concluding what they consider, when they look at us for, for class rating.
The raises last year did a okay job of helping us to get personality and ready to try to keep pers, like everybody, we're still losing personnel, because no matter where we go, all the people are paying, who else, we still, we saw a slowdown on that some, so, you know, we want good personnel, so, you know, we have to make a, see if we can understand that the board can't, we can't have a K K E to have a raise, and then also have a full stash tax, so that would be through there.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Beney, thank you for your question. To start off, you asked, is it comfortable? I, I would say it's not comfortable. These are very hard decisions in, in, to take all the rough words from the last board meeting, it's very close contacts for making these decisions, and we recognize that. We had, at this exact table, very straightforward, what is the absolute that we can work with bare bones to accomplish the mission. The city is expanding, and not only is it expanding to the annex area, we see tremendous amount of growth everywhere. And the last thing that we want to do is to damage that to the reputation. I think that we can hold the line, to answer your question, but eventually, this conversation is going to have to come back up to where if we're going to grow, we have to work, we have to find the means necessary. So to answer your question for this year, yes, ma'am, I think that we can hold the line, and we'll listen very carefully of what this, of what the leadership here makes the decisions to do to try to meet that mission, sir.
Thank you.
Officer, before we touch you, one of the things that you've struggled with over the years, not just you, but police departments everywhere, is, is filling positions. And y'all made a conscientious effort this year, I believe, to look for certified officers, so that, that they came in, ready to hit the road, running, and, and we say no training costs, that sort of thing, so it slowed your hiring somewhat. You are back at that point of starting to look at non-certified people, putting them through training, that sort of thing. Does that allow you to speed up getting to the number of people that you, F D As that you need?
Yes, ma'am, and, and this has been a discussion for all the books and all the men and women, some of the things we talked about with the pay raises and the meeting going back. We did not want to do a run out hurry and hire a bunch of numbers. We, it wasn't, we didn't want to slam the system. We wanted to very carefully try to take in the certified officers. The training sessions kind of slowed down in law enforcement in our peak winter months, in that November, December, January. So if you look at our numbers in the spring, we started, that's when you see us, okay, we, we, we did not want to ease into the, to the budget or hurt the budget in that regard, so we started picking up the pace. And now, we have probably tapped out local, regionally, and outside of trying to do out of state, which would be very tough for Mississippi, well, unfortunately. We've now, it probably cooled most of the personnel that we can get from a lot of these agencies that meet our standards, and that is very important to meet the standards. I could put a badge of gun on anybody, but not a lot of people need that responsibility or the integrity of this. And so we've made a decision that, okay, you're gonna see the numbers in the next few months kind of go up, where we're putting it back up to non-certified. It, it delayed, but it was delayed for a intentional purpose. And so I, I think that's critical, as y'all were in these discussions with budgets, to keep that backdrop in mind while we hold where we are and, and where we're going with it.
And you're testing right now, and you think you'll have some, some additional hires in the next month or so?
Absolutely. I think we tested yesterday with H R and moving forward, I'm recruiting, I've got N B O money, so we're running wide open on recruiting. I feel like I'm the lone recruiter right now.
Okay, cool, right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other thoughts you wish to share at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
Oldman, lady?
Oh, Ms. Hard, we talked about this, how, there's two hundred thousand dollars partial year triangle crossing thing, that's pro raid, what is it, three months, is that three months or two months, what?
It, it's what they present, it's about two hundred thousand. We currently got four hundred thousand in the budget, which would be at full tilt if they come forward tomorrow.
And that's, that's one hundred percent of the, of the property tax and fifty percent sales tax.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five of the sales tax. So what is the, what is assessed value? Do we know what the assessed value, what's, what's the triangle on books at, ma'am? What's there? I bet you...
I'm a betting girl, I don't know exactly what...
Thirty million? Twenty-five?
No, I talked to the guy who does the assessments sometime ago, and he said it was probably on the books at about twelve million dollars.
All right, twelve million, at fifteen percent settlement, times at one oh three, one three...
I think you're gonna be off the decimal plus there.
What's that, ma'am?
That you may be off the decimal.
All right, twelve million. All right, fifteen percent settlement, right? And if that's million eight, that's assessed rate, million eight, all right.
I'm coming up with fifty-four thousand.
That's what I came up with.
All right.
All right, and then...
Calculated and confirmed.
And then the sales tax on, I just had forty million on sales tax, I just run down the list of what, what that thing generates.
They, when they...
What were their projections?
Their projections were about three hundred and eighty-five thousand annually.
But I mean, gross sales, what, do you know what they...
Sales tax was three hundred and eighty-five thousand was what they were projecting. And we, we said we would reserve a hundred percent of those sales tax in our TIF document in the debt service fund.
So our total tax is what, if it was on the tax roll, what would they, we'd be getting? Total sales tax, property tax, five hundred, no, three, four hundred thousand?
A little over.
Oh...
Is it, that, and two is not...
No, no, you're, you're anticipating six months, probably right for six months.
It is, yeah.
But that, that'd be worst case scenario, you think, that they would, they would come on six months into the next one, is what you...
I've talked to, I've talked to Mr. Castleberry, asking him about when he thought that would probably come forward. They have pledged those sales tax, the state portion of those sales taxes to a brown water, um, Brownfield, Brownfield.
I was gonna say, wait.
Um, Brownfield mediation, and they think that they'll have that satisfied in July or possibly January, and that he can come forward right after they have to ask for the TIF, so.
Is it this July or next January, right? So...
That's how I understood it at the moment.
Yeah. But anyway, we, that is our obligation, so we've got to, we've got to budget for it.
And there's a lot of reasons that it's important to, to start putting it into debt service. One is, we actually have to make a payment. Another is, if we start building it into our budget as if it's ours to spend, then next year...
We build academy sports into our budget.
That's what happened, yes.
We have to start paying one hundred and fifty, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and fifty on there, the two. It's just all of them now, I would tell you.
There's two.
Middleton's rolling off.
By, one time, it was four, we, we tipped, we tipped hands.
Academy, Middleton, and the two with the cotton mill area.
Yeah. Middleton was our very first one, is, did it roll off this year, next year?
The mill's off, right. The mill's not off. What about cotton crossing, it's off. Thank you, that's all.
Okay.
Oh, so we gotta make up a million, too.
And, and I think, I think, I think we can do two of it with, with those interest funds on ARPA and reducing the amount that we transfer over from the general fund, so that will get you down to a million.
It's three mills.
It's a little more than three mills.
Well, that's just, we're just rounding up three mills. Um, all right, I, I will make a suggestion of something, and I, it's gonna be popular, but a Bulldog Bash, I think we all charged MSU for our whole police department nearby having to, you know, protecting twenty thousand students or, you know, I guess what I'm saying is, that's an expense to us. They have the money to pay it, and we, we basically do that as an in-kind service, what the mayor, you elaborate on that, and we're not getting paid for that.
We do it as an in-kind service. They also bring in their people and their equipment. The chief has our call, their, their people participated with ours in doing it, so it's not as though we're hung out all by ourselves. They let us use their athletic equipment, magnetrons or whatever those things are for the security, security services. So it is, it is a joint effort, and I think it has value to bring them into town, so...
But don't they get a twenty percent of this, two percent hospitality tax?
Yes, and they spend that, I think, toward the act, which ends up being somewhere in the couple of hundred thousand or more range.
But it's, the events got total cost to it, I just think that, that that's an expense to us, that you could, I don't know what you, what originally could charge, what the police department's most the cost of that. Gee, what's it cost us to, you probably put the pencil to it, what it cost us to put on the...
Last year, I don't see Daniel in here, but we've got that, every year, we put it forward as part of the in-kind services. Do you know...
No, I don't think so, but it's the most significant number of companies that we still have, but not up to top.
Well, I mean, I just think, if they, if the student association were struggling to try to pay for this spend, it'd be one thing, but they, they buy, they buy these expensive acts and put on this big event, and, and it's a, it's a one-day deal. I don't know whether we see the jolt in the sales and stuff that will bring that money, that amount of money, you know, that, that we probably spend in security and, and cleanup, Mr., the sanitation department, or the smart department, stuff like it, cleanup and everything. You know, I mean, if we charged them, found a reasonable amount to charge them, I mean, that, that's a little amount here, but I see some little amounts here, that could come off the thing, and that's not a lot of money, but it's, it's something I think would be fair. I, I mean, what we do is we say, okay, because you bring in all these people, we're gonna trade off and, and, and use our money to, to pay for security and cleanup and all that kind of thing, when I think we ought to reasonably, for our taxpayers, ought to be charging them to be able to provide that service to them. Oh, by the way, they ran our downtown, I mean, basically, our downtown roped off for, for six or eight aisles, something like that. So I mean, I think that'd be reasonable. Now, I mean, I may not be board support for that, but that would be some, a little bit you could take off, a million dollar deficit.
Well, I'm, I'm not in favor, because I think it's a, I think it's a win-win for everybody. I think it's a, an event's like a double-decker event in, in Oxford and the events they have in Hannesburg. I think it's one of those things that we do for the kids, that brings them, brings them downtown, makes them feel like they're a part of this community, not that they are, you know, solely relegated to campus in doing things. And I think that's part of, part of what I want us to do in, in having that town and gown relationship. I don't know, Alyssa, can you pull up the, or Joel, can you pull up the last year's Bulldog Bash?
I just texted you.
Oh, aren't you clever? Aren't you, aren't you clever? Good for you. All right, here's the attachment. Um, let's see. All I have to do is be, there we go. Okay, so police department, estimated cost of funding is twenty-four thousand, fire department seven hundred dollars, sanitation department was seventeen, utility department's four hundred...
Seventeen hundred, seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand. Uh, street department was twenty-five hundred, so a total of forty-five, three fifty.
Well, bill MSU, I mean, it's fair, that's just fair. That's a cost, that's a cost the taxpayers see starvel. And I, I don't know, let's have a good time, let's, let's put it, but if they have the money, they do have the money, because that, that twenty percent they're getting of that, of that food and beverage tax, it's generating about two hundred, two hundred to three hundred because that, that twenty percent they're getting of that, of that food and beverage tax is generating about two hundred, two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars a year.
It's generating about half a million.
Half a million. And, and I think they ought to pay.
They bring that budget to us every year, if you recall, and part of what they're, they spend it on the lecture series, they spend it on the, on the ACT, which is incredibly expensive, but there are lists of things that they spend it on when they bring us their budget. But as I recall, we were struggling to get them to pay the insurance, so I think there are issues associated with it. I think they've got those things budgeted.
It's really a bigger.
Is the issue, they still want to turn around to forty-five thousand dollars?
It's a bigger, it's a bigger picture, maybe, when you look at that town and gown relationship that you talk about. For instance, we, we make a contribution towards Smart Bus. There's, we're not even remotely in the ballpark of funding the paramedical transit portion of the Smart Bus system, which is heavily, which is heavily used by city residents more than students.
You do know they use that, they use us in the grant application to get their grant. You do know that, absent us, they probably.
We use them when we try to recruit businesses.
But I'm just saying, they probably don't get that, as large a grants they get, absent SIS.
Well, it's still, the university puts quite a bit of money into it themselves, and so when you start, when you start going down that path, there are lots of, lots of branches to that path that we might find ourselves going down, and I'm not sure. This is the particular bill I want to die back down, so.
Did they work, we work out a fee and lieu tax, and we've lost that hotel revenue?
Yes.
Well, no, it's not a fee and lieu, they're paying their taxes.
What about CAG's bank?
No, that's owned by the university.
And, and when that came off the tax rolls, that, people, people misunderstand how much city taxes are, are assessed on various properties. When cadence came off the tax rolls, it was less than five thousand dollars.
City, city tax.
City taxes, a pit of a league.
I agree with you.
It's a discussion, but, but not necessarily, it's not gonna balance.
Yeah, it is relevant to this, because we look at per million dollars.
It's not gonna balance, yes.
It's not about a big, a big forty thousand dollar store. That's about five percent. Or four percent, whatever, a million dollars or. Anyway, I mean, it's something to consider, I mean, it's something that if we ask, they probably pay it.
No, they won't.
They won't? Well, then what's, what is the downside, they won't have Bulldog Bash?
Yeah, that's the downside. I think it's an important, I think it's an important event.
They have to pay it on campus, I guess would accommodate.
That's exactly where they said they would take it, last time we had any kind of.
And that would be, I would, I would be detrimental to us in what way?
I guess it depends on your vision of, of start all the town and gown and the activities that we do in downtown and how, and how you want downtown to be viewed as a collective part of the, of the whole, so. Just like they're sharing.
They're asking us for a hundred thousand dollars on that smart thing issue, that's twenty-five thousand dollar increase. I mean, that's part of it. Have we still got that pencil in that, that total hundred thousand dollars?
It's, it's down here below the one point one, that's one of those things that you could.
That we could, we could save twenty-five thousand by?
Yes.
I mean, I think, I think we need to be fair. I want to, I'll be fair with them, I want them to be fair with us. And I think that's, that's, these are, these are things we need to talk about, because we're trying to buy a million dollar one.
Yes, we are, yes, we are, which is what we're doing, it's talking about. So, you know, we can take that twenty-five thousand and put that toward it and leave it at fifty, which is what we got now. We were, we used to do an in-kind, and that was back when they were building the system. I'm sorry, seventy-five, yes. Well, back when they were building the system up, that we would do the pads and, you know, do the, do the, help them do the shelters and those sorts of things. And they are less in the position of building the system up any longer, although I think there'll probably be some new, some new stops at some point. But, yeah, now it's more of a stabilized, but as we know, you know, costs go up for everything. It goes up for gas and oil, it goes up for the, paying for the drivers, so all of those things factor into adding that increase in there that they've asked for.
As it does to our police and our sanitation workers, where we have to go up, clean up after, provide security for.
I agree. All those, all those are factored in, but that's a twenty-five that you can take back out. As is the, the twenty-five of the, of my, my fifty that I had put in, so that's another twenty-five, so that's fifty there.
I would also consider, just to follow what it costs the city to do Bulldog Bash, it's fifty, and splitting that from the university.
Sure. I like that idea. Well, I mean, it, it's, it's a simple thing that, that it's, MSU, or at least the state students. But, but I mean, I guess the bare bones part of it is, they considered a value, they would continue to do it. They've been doing this for twenty years, and we consider it some value because we continue to host it. At the same time, if this costed our taxpayers thirty-five, forty, forty-five thousand dollars, then it, and we're crunching a budget, trying to figure out where we're gonna get a million dollars. It, it becomes, it becomes a, a relevant issue to whether, you know, whether or not we charge them for that, for that event. And then we're not trying to be bad guys, it's just, it is what it is.
And if I'm sitting at, at MSU or LSU, and you come to me and say, we need you to participate with this because it's, it's costly and you're the twenty-five thousand dollar bill, I'm gonna turn around and say, you know what? You're not pulling your weight on the paramedical transit thing, use your bill, and we're right back where we started.
I could go with the fire contract, and I could look at fire contracts and see what they pay on fire contracts. We could get, we could, we could sort of compare fire contracts with what Steve Auburn provides, Auburn University, stuff like that, and we might be a little bit lower than our fire contract gets to. So I mean, if we start getting those, we start getting, I know, but if we start getting those winnings, then we, we.
That's not, that's not productive.
And I'm saying, I'm just saying, you, you suggested that, and I'm just saying that there are places where we probably give MSU a good deal. And I know the fire, fire contract is one of them.
How is the renovation or reimagining of downtown on Main Street, how is that construction interfering with Bulldog Bash?
Well, it is. It's not gonna make it as, but, but we're not gonna be doing it, I mean, they've moved it to November, so we were not gonna be doing anything Main Street related other than what's being done right now until after that, so it's not gonna interfere with it in this year, which gives you a whole year to, to plan, so.
With influx of people coming, is this gonna be repaved in the near future, the next month or so?
It's gonna have temporary paving, um, do we know?
That's at fault, I mean, that's patching.
Yeah, but until we do Main, Main Street in its entirety, there's no point in coming back and doing a beautiful overlay of, of that, so. Do we have a timeline for when?
August is when they're supposed to be, this horse.
To put the temporary down, okay.
Around that time, that's when they're supposed to be, and they're a little bit ahead of it, but.
About, about time kids come back.
They're doing tie-in work right now, so the line that you got is hot and ready to go, so the stuff that you see them doing now is the tie-in to be finished with that. So I would think August will be able to get them back.
And I think you want to let it settle a little bit before so that you don't wind up with.
Yeah, which, by the way, there's a really big one on Washington Street that I fell in yesterday, as a matter of fact. Needs some, needs some gravel in it now. All right, thoughts, Mike, you've been quiet. Any thoughts, Mike? Well, okay. Ben, anything from you?
Are y'all on the budget, or y'all on the?
We're on the budget. No, we did the, we started out with the agenda, so we can concentrate for a minute.
Yeah, we met yesterday, it was just one of those, it's record inflation, I would argue, came, I guess inflation came down about thirty percent yesterday, but it's one of those, obviously, we're the minority on the, on the board, but policy shift, so didn't know if we could, talking about not getting into this today, but re, just resurface Main Street and then leftover money, put it into bill, and our debt on.
It, it has nothing to do with general fund, you missed my big, big, the beginning, so. But the Main Street and bill grant, the only dollars in the budget after today, the only dollars that are in the budget for next year is a hundred thousand dollar transfer over, so, so that's a different discussion for another day.
Can we have it?
Can we have it?
The discussion another day?
Another day, absolutely, another day, just don't make me do it today.
Yeah, yeah, that point, I like that.
Yeah.
Mayor? Okay.
Um, well, I, what do we, what do we agree to?
When we have, when we have enough information to have the discussion about the bill grant Main Street.
Well, that's, you know, what do, what do we do, and we haven't gotten, we haven't gotten to the point yet where we know exactly what our options are, so.
So we're starting, but we gotta get some answers pretty soon, and then have meetings.
Yes, absolutely.
Where we discuss it, and then plenty of times.
Absolutely, no question about it.
It says other items in budget for consideration, is that reduction?
Yes.
So this is like holding the line on the library, holding the line on, um, Main Street?
Uh, Main, Main, this is Main Street landscaping, this is what we send to the Main Street Association.
Is this an expenditure, or is this?
Yes, yes.
This is an increase in expenditure?
They were asking for an increase.
And y'all are wanting, recommending that we honor all these increases?
Well, when, when, Auburn rups on the Main Street board, so they were asking for an increase.
They, they were, um, I told them that they could ask all they wanted in the simple side. This is a, I think, a compromise of what they asked for, and I'm not, I'm not in full or dense, you know, that's just a number that's been plugged in along with the capital improvements of the library, they might need HVAC work, sorry.
Yes.
They're not allowing that HVAC for three years, so.
These amounts are part of budgeting, basically, over what last year's budget was. This is taking a vague ban on to the other one.
Right, so that. All these numbers, FY twenty twenty, these are holdovers?
Those are increases.
Increase of what we have.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
But we could, we could deny all these, and that comes up with how much? Uh, just, and the line items, other items in budget for consideration?
Yeah, well, don't, we're not gonna slap, deny the eight fifty, so just.
Gotta be scratched.
I say that, of course, I don't have a vote.
We spoke, we spoke about that yesterday.
Well, you got PERS, and we can't totally.
We can't, but the general, the, the salary increases is what I was.
Is the, is the increase to PERS accounting for that eight fifty?
No, that's separately.
There'll be more PERS, because you pay more people more money.
PERS is built in based on what we know today.
It's four fifty, would just be based on what they anticipate, what they say that it's gonna increase.
And that's twenty-five.
As the rule is today.
Yeah.
If we slide in eight fifty for salary increases, is it gonna increase PERS contribution?
He's got that built into the eight fifty number.
Yeah, the eight fifty includes all benefits.
That includes all benefits, okay. I guess it's written out there, I didn't see it. Actually, even better.
Yeah, so realistically, we're looking at one point two million.
I'm giving the two hundred thousand for the production and the bill grant transfer, so.
So if you, if you leave out the eight fifty for salary increases, then you take it all the way down to whatever that would be, two hundred, twenty-five, two hundred, tw- uh, four fifty? Four fifty.
So we'll do one eighty. Seven thirty-one.
Sorry. Two and a half mils?
On the front page.
Two and a half mils.
On the front page, on top one, under property mechanics, so we'll just provide the current rate.
Here's something else to consider, our, our budget's growing, but our fund balance, that should be a percentage of our general fund budget, is not growing with it. We're still, we're showing the same, the same fund balance of two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, yet our budget's gonna grow to almost thirty million, and it ought to be ten percent, which means that it ought to be, our fund balance ought to be creeping up, getting around three million, but that's just, I'm just saying, that's.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you.
I mean, I, that's what the auditor's office told me, the state auditor's office, they said, you budget for surpluses and that, and cities are, I know that, you can, you knew that, that you can budget for, for a slight, a certain.
If you have a surplus.
A fund balance. Yep, you can, it's considered good fiscal.
It's not happening this year.
But anyway, that's something.
Fund rating is reflective of our, of our fund balance as well, so.
So I think that, you know, at some point in time, that needs to kind of creep on, get on back, or get up to where it's about three million, just, just so we look financial sound, and we issue. Yeah, I mean, we can't do it this year, but we, we need to certainly be thinking about it.
So.
And, and here's something else, is, is these TIFs come off, and we get, and get some of these, some of this money back into our general fund, we didn't realize, I looked at it, at least substantiating, or webbing this thing, I looked at our retail sales. Our retail sales are up four percent over, over last year. Month over month, year over, I looked at it, you can go to M, I'll go to MDO and look at it, and that covers inflation. So our retail sales, if you account for inflation, is flat. We're not selling any more items in City Starb than we were in FY twenty-two.
It's not just inflation, that also includes annexation.
Right.
And how much?
That's right, we got, we got a hundred and thirty-five, no, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, no, come with my annexation.
How much did the annexation cost us? I mean, the figures I've seen, million dollars in lawsuit legal fees?
Oh, well, that's, that, we paid for that, that's over and done with.
I'm just saying, it's still money that came out of the general fund, and you're not gonna see return on annexation for, what, ten years, basically?
But as, as we approach TIFs in the, as we approach TIFs in the future, I think it's important to understand that, and Mark Castleberry's, don't use the term before, it's not, what do you call it? When one business just moves over to another? Cannibalizing. Is, if somebody moves Kroger to Aldi and buys groceries, we lose the sales tax on that, because we, we lose it from a store that we can capture sales tax on to one that all seventy-five percent sales tax is gonna be used to service dead on TIF bonds. And so as we go forward, that's something to think about, because when these TIF things start kicking in with Triangle Mar, some of that sales tax that's gonna serve us dead on TIF bonds, not profit tax, but sales tax, is gonna be money that was somewhere else where we were captioning that sales tax on before, before the Triomare opened and we, and we granted this TIF toward, that's just, that's just the way it's gonna be, so. When, going forward, y'all think, I mean, that's something that we need to determine, okay, if we grant this TIF, it's gonna be really nice, we're gonna like it, but people are just gonna move down the street and start spending money in a place that's got a TIF, and they're leaving a place where we're captioning sales tax, and all of a sudden, our sales tax is flat, or starting to kind of drift on, you know, come down a little bit or something, and, and that will cause that, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a causation of that, so, that's something we all think about.
Back to plug in, plug in numbers, and, and talking about eliminating everything other than the patio entries, can, can we leave the HVAC system at the library in there and take away the mayor's master plan update for parks? That's, that's a wash.
What's going on with it? How many dire straits are?
Oh, it's, it's been on its last leg for three years, and we own that building, so we won't be responsible for fixing it, and I just assume have something budgeted for fixing it as opposed to trying to scramble around and find twenty thousand dollars sometime after.
Have we gotten a hard estimate on that? I mean, is that enough?
They're not, they're not asking to repair, they've, they've gotten estimates in the past, they've gotten estimates in the past.
Was there some talks about, among some board members, of maybe moving the library to one eighty-two or something?
Oh, well, we were, that's a, that would be a huge.
It's still my high frame, so.
Yeah, and that would be.
But, but that's not gonna happen in this particular site.
So would you want to airborne the capital improvements just for air pay?
Capital improvements, I don't think they'll have anything other than HVAC, but building repairs and money.
HVAC and brands.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we acknowledge that we are going under the assumption that we're going to adopt all of these suggestions to get it from two point eight to one point two. I mean, we're assuming, we're talking, we're having this conversation as if that is a given, that we as a board have to figure out whether these.
Are acceptable.
Are acceptable.
Well, they were acceptable to the department heads, which is where we, where we started. So that was the reason we went through that exercise. When we revisited all of that, to see how far out we are, what can we live with, and that was the department head.
So should we have some general agreement that, it's got, okay, let's, let's make that assumption, do that.
I think, I think before we move forward, we need to have some kind of general agreement, I agree with, I mean, I think that's.
No.
Does anybody have issues with that?
Yes.
Because we all have to be on the same page that we are going to accept, that we're going to think that one point two is enough.
Yes.
Does it have two point eight?
As well.
Yeah, if you look, if you look at that and you take the mayor's master plan, as Sandra was, was wanting to make swap there, but if you take all of those, these are, these are the items that, again, have been looked at by the department heads, and they have said that, you know, if, if we had had the information with two point eight before we sent it out to the board and gone to the department heads and said, you know, we're way out of line, what can we do, then they would, we would come back with this, and the board would have been looking at one point one, because I think the department is the ones who, who can say that, yes, we can live with this, and, and yes, this is how we're gonna make the budget match, so I would assume that the board would be supportive of that.
What about, well, the fire department, I know is one that we pay attention to, and police, but, you know, when we do these under-budget acquisitions, and then the guys that are there that are coming off a forty-eight hour shift, and they're required or asked to stay for another day or two, you know, what does that do for morale, as you, and chief may want to speak to that, I mean, you know, what's happened lately in the fire department that, you know, some guys have been, they, they worked, they self-voted, I guess, for a forty-eight ninety-six shift, and they come off a forty-eight and they hadn't seen their family, and they gotta go to their other job, because firemen don't pay enough, and then they're required to stay, and then they're written up because, reprimanded because they didn't stay, and is that, what's become of that?
We had a problem with, we, we had, we had, we had a couple potential write-ups, but they're not being written up, but we went back and revamped the system about a month and a half, or two months, so we had a concern recently, we basically didn't say, hey, you don't wanna work three straight days, that's fine, so they get their pay, so we had an issue, we, unless, they don't come to work at all, they, they had to be written out a few weeks ago.
Well, and that fits in the budget as it relates to overtime, and so our overtime hasn't been budgeted for in, in this room.
Does the same thing happen in? Is the same thing happening in the police department? I mean, they're asked, how do they handle the overtime?
It's a different overtime, but, you know, that's a dollar figure as well, and I can't remember now, what we let you do for overtime wise.
Four fifty, five hundred.
So, four fifty, five hundred thousand, so if you could hire, I'm, I'm unaccounted, if you fire four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of people, does that eliminate overtime?
No.
Why not?
No, because they will be working Monday to Friday, they, that's, that's, that's a simplification. When the chief needs extra people, he needs extra people, he doesn't need them necessarily probed later through, through the year, so, when he's got a detective, um, investigating something, he needs overtime for that detective, when he's got an event that he's gotta carry.
You're gonna always carry four, five hundred thousand dollars of overtime?
There's gonna be some overtime, and, and it's, we've actually budgeted down a little this year because we think he's gonna be fully staffed, or is fully staffed as we allow him to be.
Well, and remember that we do events, and events, uh, whether it's football game out there, or it's a football bash, it's, I mean, they do that, um, you know, those events are still gonna incur overtime.
So, my thinking is if you hire three of those positions, it doesn't, because you still got a fully staffed, we're a seasonal town, we're a tourist town, I get it, I mean.
You can't, you can't staff up for your max.
This is not a normal town, but you just offset that somehow, but, what does it say when it says lag? Police department hiring lag, that's just a ten month delay?
There's always gonna be a little bit of delay as one person leaves, another person comes in, he's hiring ten, ten new officers, we think there's gonna be a couple of months vacancy's in there, so we're just recognizing vacant positions.
Is it, couldn't, we talked about this yesterday, I mean, I know the answer, I think, but the eight fifty, we're at a point now, I mean, our department heads can all, I'll be honest, I think the department heads live a different life than the guys that are making twenty-nine, thirty thousand, is this something that you're gonna see employees leave if they're not giving up, you know, a recommended? I know, we're, they're leaving regardless, I used to think it was a department head issue, in certain departments, I, maybe if we did it, you know, we have always lost police and fire about the same turnover rate I've ever seen, it's the same, sanitation always loses at about the same rate. You think there's an increase in sanitation turnover now, or a decrease since you've been on the board? You know?
I think it's, I think it is, those are our biggest departments, and that you always have turnover, and the amount of turnover, at least I had a hundred percent turnover one year in, in the.
Do you have one today?
And they lost, and I lost them to, um, utilities, TBA, and I lost them to MSU for four or five thousand dollars more per person.
Yeah.
And I say this as an older person, the younger generation will change jobs, they don't think about it for a dollar or two, they, they, I mean, it, it doesn't have to be knowing from this level of pay to this level of pay, they will, they will put more dollars.
And that's what we, I mean, I said, we know the answer, I just wanna publicly ask those questions, because we have people that will go make fifty dollars more a week, and they don't understand, um, less benefits or no benefits, I didn't know from an exit, not an exit enter. How do you retain people before they start looking, to understand that unless you go make another three hundred dollars a week, that you're not getting the benefit for what, you're going somewhere with no benefits to make more money?
I think part of it, you need, uh, by showing that you have commitment to providing the good workplace, giving them the resources that they need, paying them for their efforts, um, I think, I think we set that tone to start with, and then it goes from, from there down.
I was in a section last, last conference, last year, I had a conference about younger people, how they gonna do, you can't stop that, because they'll go hire somebody with, that had ten or twelve jobs before they hire somebody that didn't have a three job, it's, it's just the way these young people do, they're not, it's just like Lisa said, they gonna leave, they gonna leave, they gonna go anywhere for a few dollars more, they leaving, regardless of the situation or the condition they going in, they gonna leave, you gonna have that turnover. I was in a section like that, they hire somebody with twelve, fifteen jobs before they hire somebody that never had a two job.
I used to, when, when you look at a resume, you look at how much, how often, and how long they, how often they change jobs, how long they stay.
Right.
And, and these, these days, it's.
They resume way longer than people that have been on job fifteen, twenty years, it's just, it's just the culture now, it's just the way they gonna do, just a few bit, a few dollars more, they gonna leave, they, I don't care what you do.
And we need to understand that and try to work within the framework that we're, they're dealt.
And we've, we've tried to recognize that with, with flex time, and, um, again, providing a good work environment, um.
Pay increases, all of that.
Pay increases, you know.
Yeah.
So far out of the box, you might laugh, but has a city ever, has any city or municipality ever gotten into the provision of providing childcare? So, basically, like Mississippi State provides Aiken Village, and you can have a reduced childcare, I'm just saying, somebody, that's for me, when you kid, two kids nowadays, from the, from birth to, Michael knows, from birth to six, it's basically about a thousand dollars a month for two people. So, if you can reduce rate like Aiken Village, and you say, hey, we can do it, and if the city ever, and, and, I mean, I'm just serious, that's, but that makes a break to a lot of people from zero to.
Let me give you the, let me give the other side of that.
Yeah. Anything to help our employees.
The other side of that, what if we provided elder care?
What is that?
Yeah, he went right to me.
Wait, wait.
I'm, I'm.
Fact up here, best you can, or lie to someone.
Didn't you look your way, right there.
You've got a parent that you've got to take care, so you're looking at, am I gonna work two more years, or am I gonna go home and care for my parents?
Are we losing anybody that's gotta go care for an elder, or are we losing people in their, like, beginning of their career or end of their career?
We don't, we don't ask those questions.
No, I'm telling you, we ever lost about the end of their career due to salary inequity?
It's what you see, it's what you see in large, large, large companies now.
Are they doing that now?
They doing.
Elder care and, and daycare.
They doing it.
It's good to think.
But large, large, large.
Well, actually, they're, they're entertaining doing that out at the, um.
That's a large, large, large.
Well, yeah, aluminum, steel, fat car, all those are looking at doing a collective childcare.
Thinking, like I said, outside the box, you're talking about some of these places in town are sixty, sixty-five, seven thousand a month, I don't understand somebody at that point in their life, uh, if they don't have the financial means, you know, my brother sold long-term care insurance, and he said, that's, that's one of those things, if you could, uh, have elder care, you know, I don't know if it's getting that, but if it retains employees for the hardest two points of their life, which is getting started and, and finishing your career, um, you know, start with always thought outside the box, I just, I don't know.
That's an astronomical cost, that's.
I, I think, I think it's a great thing to do sooner, but I think it is cost prohibitive for this budget cycle, but certainly.
Yeah, I understand.
For a, for an entity that's, we only got three hundred employees.
Yes.
I mean, that's not a large.
Not enough.
No. It's, it's. It's gotta have a collective.
There's, there's a critical balance you gotta have to.
And the pay is totally different between the steel mill in here and making work out there, but, I mean, that's just, what are the outside the box thinking of y'all, or anybody thought about that retained employees?
Well, that's part of the flex time and trying to go to a four-day work week.
Where, where's that talk at? I'm okay with it, I'm.
Well, each department head has.
Each department head has, head has the flexibility to, to institute that where, where that can make them work.
So, it's happening now?
We've had people working from home, Joel has worked from home a number of times, even when the system was down, where Joel was working from home, so.
Well, the reality is, people work, you know, I'm an exterminator, and I, all day, every day, I see people working from home, but just, honestly, I mean, I don't know how far you commute, but I'm okay with it, I might have not been okay with it pre-COVID, but that's fine, if that, have y'all seen retention rates increase at all among our professionals that get to choose a four-day work week?
No.
Has it worked at all?
Uh, some of them will please with it, the fire department is using it, police department is about to start using it, um, so some of the department heads and some of the employees, they're happy, you know, they get the work from home four days, uh, GP can speak on a couple hours, they seem to be more happier, they're excited about it, so I think it's something that we're gonna continue to build on.
About our third year of that? You think we're in our third year of that?
We're in our first year.
First year.
This is the very first year. Anything else that you're seeing emerging trends post-COVID that retains employees?
You know, as we're talking about the salary study, I think we have to continue to stay competitive, we're constantly losing people to, like Walmart, Wendy's, McDonald's, all those employees are paying over fifteen dollars, and we've had a lot of people with sanitation go to those other establishments to work, um, if you look at places, if you look at like some of our engineers, our alignment, uh, they're constantly even going to MDR, chain, all those big contracting companies, since all this work has gone on currently, I mean, we have employees, we have senior engineering utilities, it's probably making junior level pay, you know, and so, those are some of the things that we're gonna have to continue to stay competitive, because if we lost these employees now, I'm not gonna be able to replace them for, for what our current pay is now. I've seen it in our engineering department, we got a position up in there, nobody even touched this current salary that we have, I'm trying to fill that position.
If we can keep them, and retention is so important, if we can keep them by the salary increase, it's a lot less expensive than losing them and try to fill that position back.
The problem from a budget standpoint, you require a salary increase every year, I mean, it's.
Absolutely, and, and it's not just the, it's not just that we're having to hire in at a higher, higher rate, that, that experience walks out the door when, when you lose an experienced employee, your current staff becomes less productive while you're getting somebody new to speed, so, you're just better off all the way around if you can keep the people on the bus that you want on the bus.
Are there any incremental strategies out there for five to ten, so basically, when you hit five years, you get some kind of increase in benefits, or ten years, you know, I mean, this is like outside the box, but you had a threshold benchmark for ten years with a city, it's, is that even possible? You know what I'm saying?
Eight years. We do anniversary increases based on longevity, but remarkably, we are one of the few cities that do that, most places do not.
What is that now?
Longevity increases.
So, your third year, six, ten.
Three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five years, you get a three percent increase based on.
You know, we're just, so everybody know, y'all know more than I do, we're sitting here fighting the same cycle, year in, year out, and, uh, how do you, how do you increase it? Chance of it not happening next year? If it's elder care, or it's something that we're routinely seeing that the city can step up and be progressive and that, and say, hey, this is what the immediate values of the city do.
I'll roll one out for you, if you're gonna just invest a lot of money, and.
No.
Well, he's sounding like he's willing to spend millions of dollars on.
It's all about return on investment.
Your retention, um, affordable housing, if we did some sort of housing subsidy, okay, so, but, but where's the money gonna come from?
Well, how does that work in big, where, where it does work, they provide a percentage of your.
Stipend to some kind of stipend of some sort, you know, or, or, or.
Okay.
None of that's gonna happen today.
Well, how do we get to a number?
That we can afford.
What? What is our number?
I don't know. We were, we're at a point now where I think we could conceivably have it down to.
We're somewhere between seven fifty and a billion.
Yeah.
Which is. Depending on your real size of your pitch. Not.
Where did the three hundred thousand go, drop off, the, the million, what was the drop off, that's seven hundred?
About, it's about two point five mils.
Two hundred thousand for the, using the interest and reducing the transfer over from, to the bill fund.
That's a million.
That gets you down to a million, um, the, the smart, the landscape increase, gets you a teeny bit lower.
The other twenty-five of the mayor's, of the pairs and parks master plan.
Yeah, gets you a little low, and, and, and if you wanna delay your Colonial Hills drainage project, that gets you down to seven fifty or so.
About on revenue side that, uh, pulled off back, I'm, I'm seeing.
Well, we might be able to negotiate our way through that by the time we probably have to do a budget, but I've made a note to go to contact the folks who are in charge of that and start talking about a shared effort.
Yeah, it was a flop last year, I mean, you look at, if there ever definition of.
It was not.
Wouldn't we want to say this, wouldn't we want, it says, we're trying to reduce the budget, we're just plugging up, plugging number, we feel like that it's what our cost is, and why not?
What, what do we budget, well, what do we budget for, we budget if it is predictable and quantifiable, and, and unless MSU has bought into it, I don't think it's either predictable or quantifiable.
You mean, lest they tell us they want to pay us?
That they will agree to do.
But it's, it's being hosted in our downtown, and we using our police department, our department, our sanitation department to, to do this, we call, we hold cards on that.
Well, we don't, but they'll just say they're not gonna do it, in which case, it's not revenue, so you can't budget for revenue, it's not gonna come in.
I think that you could probably look, see what a twenty-four hour, what revenue benefit the city is, and I bet it's, I bet it's nominal, because you, these students are already here, they just come over down, drink beer, and get their burger, let's use it, go back to camp.
And it's not, it's not intended as a, as a. Quid pro quo, it's intended as a town and gown relationship opportunity for bringing the kids into town, which you can't quantify because they come down to nine-two-nine, because suddenly now they know nine-two-nine exists. I've told this story, and I'll tell it again, the first year we held Bulldog Bash, which was twenty seventeen, which was my first year in office, we held it downtown, and I walked among the crowd till the damn thing broke up, and I heard more times than I can count, you know, I've never been downtown, and these are kids who are out of campus, who have never taken the time to come downtown, and so, introducing them to downtown, I mean, there are other ways that we're doing it now, because once I realized that was an issue, then, you know, Main Street, uh, the Main Street program, the partnership are all trying to do things in conjunction to get students and parents downtown, but that was one of those things that was an epiphany for me, is to, we've got to get these kids to understand that, they can't make it home, you know, they're gonna definitely leave us if they don't think of it as home, so, we bring them downtown and help, help them feel like it's home, um, so, that's, that, you can't quantify that.
How much is Bulldog Bash, how much do we spend?
Forty-five thousand.
It was in kind, in kind.
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand, actually.
Those are, those are real costs.
Yeah, well, they are, they're in-kind services though, as opposed to, um, just, you know, handing, handing them a check, so, but they spend their money coming down here too.
Here's what I'll say on that, I, I give it another year, I think whoever planned it, it was the first year it's ever been planned on an off weekend to try to, from what I understand, bring something that weekend that was a dead weekend in our fall schedule, it didn't work, um, give it another year, I think you gotta, I mean, has it been planned on a home game weekend?
Oh, yes.
This year has?
No, no, this year, I don't know, they changed the date, so I don't know what date it is now, it's not.
It wasn't, they planned before on road trips, as, because of so much reliance on the athletic department, the police department, um, so, this was, I think, more than group set, it was a TikTok kind of base band rather than your traditional.
Yeah, it was terrible.
Popular, but you hear the choir and others who are.
Yes, it's no Jeffrey Robb. It was no Hardy, it was no, you know, any of the others, yes, it was not, it was not their best effort, and, and, you know, it may be that it has lived its cycle and isn't of the value that I thought it was at one point in time, again, you're trying to, you know, trying to do something to bring, bring people downtown and to be a part of the community in a way that is different.
Let me ask you. We're talking about pennies on the dollar, but, uh, like the, uh, what do y'all call the Dotson race? That has been by far the most talked about thing I've ever heard, being in the community the last month or two, how are we gonna promote that? That's not, we'll talk about that another day, but I just wanna start that conversation, because these people are coming out of the woodworks, apparently there's Dotson racing leagues, and I've had people from, I'm sorry, I go to Mississippi Gulf Coast, and they're talking about bringing their Dot, so next year's gonna be a blow up.
Yeah, it was a big deal, it was a much bigger deal than we anticipated this year, but, but again, you know, and that was in the cotton district, so, and, and again, trying to get stuff a little further into the downtown, so that you have that, that Lee Hall to City Hall kind of feel, um, that we're all interconnected there, so, but yes, that was a great event. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, just, you go right ahead, because you have to say the thing, huh? Sure.
What, what was the budget in the month last year for the salary study? Do you remember? I can pull that from the, I got all the. I don't remember the exact number, but I think it was one point.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just wanted to go back to the front page and, and just add some explanation for the actual property tax assessment adjustment, of what we budgeted on the handouts that you have, the detail reports, were our estimates based, since that was printed last Thursday, we've gotten the actual numbers from the county, and so, this is a plus adjustment of one ninety-nine, seven sixty, um, it's based on ninety-five percent of the people paying their property tax are not having any of that, so, that's what, that's why we're changing that, we're putting it in actual.
Okay.
And, and, and we've stretched the sales tax as far as we think we can stretch it based on where it's trended this year, and.
Yeah, well, I don't wanna start.
We missed, we missed last year big time, and so.
We don't wanna do that again, we're just in a bad place.
So, you had a, you had a projection in the budget for the assessment, this is increased above from actual numbers, this is another increase above what you had originally estimated, another two hundred thousand dollars?
The county, when we did it last, when we did see Thursday, the county didn't have the tax rolls finalized, and they finalized some this, this last Monday or so, and, uh, so these are based off the actual tax rolls from here.
And they won't give us the numbers until they finalize them?
But y'all close, I mean, it's, I know y'all close.
Yeah, we were close, but, we were two hundred thousand, which is not bad, that can be answered.
All right, so, as, as we stand right now, we've, we have found enough to get us down to, and I say this without, obviously, a full bore, uh, to get us down to seven fifty or so?
Probably, seven hundred, seven thirty-four.
On Colonial Hills?
And I'll just work with you, you're gonna go back to your constituents and say, I'm gonna raise your taxes and take away the finishing project we're doing, give me some suggestions on how to deliver that, is.
How'd that work with me?
Because we're not raising your taxes three minutes, we're only raising it two and a half, because we're delaying your project.
I could raise it three.
Well, we could raise it three and do your project. Well, we could raise it three and do your project.
So we, so we're going to like increasingly minutes two and a half?
That, that's where we are on this. That's, that's what the numbers.
Unless we can eliminate.
Unless there's something else. And if you want to not do as much in the salary study, but to me, that is, that's.
You, you committed to continuing the bill grant where that mill that's, that's going down there right now going to debt would be.
We're reducing it to a hundred thousand dollars.
Going toward that mill going to that and two hundred cent up here? I mean, just staying.
A hundred thousand going to bill two hundred, stay here. And if that changes over the next two months, well, we'll change it, but, but right now that's one of the pros.
There were two hundred thousand dollars of interest in there.
Right.
We don't have any Geo bond debt coming off, but we're servicing with, 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 everyone taxing. It's what I'll finish. Not currently. You'd have it in there.
The ones, the ones that are rolling off over the next several years are small dollar amounts. When we get to fiscal year thirty-one, I think there are some large dollar amounts that start to blow off. So thirty-one, thirty-one to thirty-five, whoever's on the board at that point is going to be like geniuses.
Capitalizing on Cornerstone, who's our lead person that books tournaments? Like book a triple the business there in two years ago. Is it SFM or is it somebody in the parking system? Joe Dan's here, I think. Who schedules tournaments? How do we go out and become the number one parking estate?
Well, SFM is in charge of establishing tournament, the tournaments and tournament schedules and being in contact with the, with the Grand Slams and the.
U triple S A.
U triple S A, thank you. U triple S A and the other one that I can't remember either. Yeah, perfect game, thank you. So they're the ones who are making those schedules because they're the ones with contacts.
How do you, how do you market yourself more efficiently with that? I mean, is that out of our?
Conversation for them.
I need to talk to that person. I think we're lacking in the tournament schedule just because we're delayed on the construction. But at this point, you should be booking up for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
Well, they, they are booking up for twenty twenty-three. I don't know that we've got.
Yeah, we've got a full schedule every weekend, pretty much.
All this rest of this year?
Mid-August.
Well, no, because we're not open yet. We can't make promises on something that we, that we aren't open to yet. But in twenty twenty-four.
We'll start on that first thing.
Well, I think you've already got some things that are scheduled for twenty twenty-four.
Hey, I would say while Joe Dan's here, he's one of the teams that went really far in the baseball this year. I know we see all the headlines with Joe Dan, the coach, and then we had another team that actually won the World Series. That's a side note. That's some big time accomplishments. You just had two major hires at Starwood High School and Starwood Academy. Is exactly what I thought might would happen with Cornerstone. There's player development over the next six to eight years. It's fixing to be incredible. And that's, I know baseball and softball and pickleball are the big things now, but you're fixing to see some player development come out of here that's.
Well, and obviously, you know, somebody's bought a piece of that property over there by Cornerstone. They're gonna build something, so that was, I mean, that was why we did it, is to see that development on that side of town. I think more is going to be happening. But in the meantime, we gotta, we gotta get this budget.
I got a last thing and I, I, this will be, I yield for the day, I promise. On the Cornerstone and North Star Industrial Park, what's budgeted in here for more buildings getting built or?
Debt service, that's, that's all.
Is that coming off of our, our revenue, our regular general fund revenue?
Debt service.
How much is?
Through fiscal year thirty-five, about five hundred rooms, a thousand dollars.
And based on this, what was the bond issue?
Seven, seven million for fifteen years.
Yeah, it was shared with the county, so it was seven and seven.
Our, our share.
But I, I, what comes out of our budget, our general fund budget, it's by half a year.
Five to eleven.
And, and it pays, and it pays off in fiscal thirty-five.
Twelve years.
And as long as we're talking about North Star, there's a spec building that's up there that right now is being seriously looked at. In fact, they've come to DRC to talk to us about going in there. And there's a hundred thousand square foot pad that's being, it's gonna be constructed and they're also looking at a two hundred thousand square foot pad being constructed, so.
And those kind of monies are typically coming from MDA.
Yes, they're, they're, the governor allotted, I think, three, three point four million for North Star. So those, those monies are coming from the state in support of those pad constructions and the, and the, the cutting of the trees and getting it ready for site preparation, so.
Only thing we have is debt service.
We have an operation because of that. And of course, the industries come in, we can get, we'll get job creation, we, we will get revenue off of those industries.
Property tax hopefully, unless.
I don't think so.
Unless we get hit up for a fee and lieu.
There's, there's a.
But, but that's the, the property tax piece of it. To get a fee and lieu, there's, there are only specific categories that, that qualify for that and they're not the kind of things.
There's a ten-year exemption, what's, what's the state exemption? Ten-year, ten-year exemption for property taxes and that's the county and city. And the only people get taxed is schools on, on, on the industry like that.
But they're, they're like movie industries or.
Yeah, they're, they're creative jobs, this is a good thing.
Yeah, the, the things that can get fee and lieu, fee and lieu are, are very specific and.
Didn't we just expand our fee and lieu options or something?
We, we, we put in a tax abatement policy, but fee and lieu is a state program and, and not likely to, we may be lucky, but not likely.
The, the fee and lieu stuff usually ends up going out into the, into the mega sites. That would be the aluminum plant or the steel plant or the padcar, that sort of thing. Because they have to be, they have to be that size project.
We would lumber mill down here, did a fee and lieu for, for the school system instead of doing it right now. But, but Bueller, lumber company out of, out of Washington, what, out of Michigan, wherever, built a plant. But they, they did an immediate, they did a fee and lieu and came and started paying the school system, no county or city. The school system's not down there, but then it was a ten-year deal and then they go on tax rolls after that, so. But it was, that didn't happen with city and county, it just happened with the school system, a fee and, and a fee and lieu, a, a, a tax and rent. Mayor, what I think we need to do is, is come back and have another meeting and then, and before we, and then that time, maybe there would have been some brainstorming among us and among department heads and stuff, where we can close that seven hundred thousand dollar gap, have another meeting. But we, this has been very productive and have another like this, where we just spread everything out the table and have our, our experts and our department heads in the room pretty soon, as soon as possible, so it would be. And then at some point down the road, we need to start to also put this other stuff on the table. Downtown, bill grant and some of these things, and start to figure out how those things, I mean, as soon as y'all meet with the MDOT and we figure out whether, how we gonna pay for those. I mean, we got a bill grant that's blown up to thirty-three million or something, hasn't it, or something?
Forty-one.
Forty-one million. And, and don't think that some other projects are not gonna blow up to that kind, not that amount, but they gonna blow up. And so we just come, start to kind of think how we're gonna think our way through and pay for some of this stuff going forward.
Well, we absolutely will have another, have another meeting on Wednesday.
And, and you said got it down to seven hundred thousand. I don't know that we have because the Colonial Hills project is still, still in there. So somewhere between seven hundred and fifty and a billion.
Yeah.
Where are we gonna get the results of the service?
Monday.
I wanted to be a team player, I'm sorry. But I can't support cutting two hundred grand out my ward and voting for two and a half now.
I'll figure, vote on the taxi process.
We let you play Bulldog Bash or wouldn't you do it?
No, that'd be, that'd be a sitting target for all my constituents from down in.
They don't, they're not calling it Bulldog Bash. Go ahead.
I would propose, so, and then y'all told me the marching orders going forward, is that women are taking us, we can add a column over here that says, post discussion today. We put most of these items here, we'll have the salary study numbers, we can align it.
I don't think the whole budget, no. I think a smaller sheet like that, if you wanna take those items out, but rather than having us go through each page of the budget.
I can email it to.
And then we can have a summary, but we'll have harder number of the things that follow today's discussion. We'll get with code, we'll see, this two hundred is in addition to another two hundred that we have left over. So see what, we'll get some solid more numbers on what's left to go for Colonial. If not four hundred thousand, do we have three hundred thousand?
This is very helpful.
Can we come back and do a Friday, ten o'clock like this? I mean, this is a good, I mean, everybody agree this is a pretty good format or you'd rather, we'd rather do it a different time, so.
Well, we have work sessions set up on Fridays. I think Friday is a good, is a good day to do it. It seems to be people are scheduling.
Ten o'clock, you got time.
Well, no, no, I wasn't thinking about next Friday, I was thinking about the Friday that we normally do it, which would be the, the thirtieth, I think, or twenty-eighth or something.
Well, we've got some time, we can start early.
Yes, ma'am.
At, at some point in, in the not-too-distant future, if we hope to vote on this in early September, Lisa's gonna have to make a publication about what our anticipated revenues are. And so, so we're, we're.
September's closing.
I mean, that, I mean, that is the part that we would like to give it, uh, August.
Twenty-eighth, okay, let's.
But you're gonna have to have public hearings too, so.
Twenty is the last meeting in August, right? That's what, still a meeting, though?
No, fifteenth or fourteenth. Yeah, fourteenth is, so we can have a special call near the end of August if we need to. But I'd rather, I'd rather not because if, we've got time to settle, settle our way through this. And if it ends up just being a vote, then it ends up being a vote to see where we go and how we manage it. But we need to know early on.
How soon will the, y'all meet with the MDOT about this thing?
One day.[1707.95]